Item number thirty-two, please.
Item thirty-two is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of said city by changing a street name.
Good evening, Chad Heavy with the Engineering Division of Public Works. This ordinance proposes to change the street name of Powderhouse Road and South Dakota Highway eleven to Veterans Parkway. The portion of Powderhouse Road is from Madison Street south to Arrowhead Parkway, and then the portion of South Dakota Highway eleven is from Arrowhead Parkway to the south. The process to rename this street has been reviewed by the Street Naming Committee and is in accordance with City Ordinance thirty point oh six-two. I can ans-- I'm not going to go through the process with you tonight. I will answer questions if you have questions on the process. I think in front of you, there is a amendment that will have to be remade-- made to remove one of the legal descriptions that's in the ordinance. I'm going to assume that you're aware of the history, or you will be made aware of the history here by others following my presentation. The only other comment I will make is that there is a Powderhouse Road, which is a frontage road on the east side of the current Highway eleven that runs from Arrowhead Parkway down to Twenty-Sixth Street. That frontage road is named Powderhouse Road, and that frontage road will continue to be named Powderhouse Road. So with that, I will entertain any questions you may have for me.
Chad, thank you. Appreciate that. Folks, this is a second reading, so you actually have the opportunity to speak to the council. If you'd like to, please just come forward. Again, just state your name, and if you could keep your comments to five minutes or less, the council would appreciate that. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jim Carlson. I'm the current president of the Minnehaha County Historical Society. And we would like to see the Powderhouse Road name stay. Stay it as named. We have nothing against Veterans Memorial Parkway, but I think there are other possibilities. What we see is there's some rich history there with the Powderhouse Blast and the Dolly Farm, and we'd like to see, you know, that all the historical nature stay. The-- can I put this on? We have a historical marker for the Powderhouse Blast that was taken down when they did the highway construction, and it's been in our office for a couple of years, and we want to get it back up. Currently, we're looking for an appropriate site to put it. But because of the historical nature of the sign being there and the road, we think it's important to keep the road there. As I said, we're not against-- and this is from Bruce Blake's book. These are-- we sell these too. They're available at the Old Courthouse Museum and other places. He's put together a big book of all kinds of markers, historical markers, in Minnehaha County, and one of them is the Powderhouse Road Blast. As I said, we're not against veterans. In the book, there's ten markers, stories on ten markers that have to do with veterans and/or military. In fact, we just installed at Veterans Park two markers, historical markers, and we're going to dedicate them on July twenty-eighth at 6:00 P.M., and you're all invited to the dedication to them. Can we show those? No. There you go.
I just wanted to show the Veterans Park.
This just shows Veterans Park, and if you see the two red marks, that's where the new markers were put. And one of them on the west is the midair collision, and I understand the Veterans Park Board is trying to get an airplane there too, which will be pretty neat because it'll be seen from Russell Street. And this is just to give you an idea of what the markers look like. I'm sure you've seen them, but that's the midair collision that we just put up and will be dedicating. The Minnehaha County Historical Society was started in nineteen twenty-seven, and the reason was to record the history, rich history, of Minnehaha County, and also to educate the public and our members about that rich history. So we would like the Powderhouse Road name to stay. I'm not a historian. I call myself history-minded, so I'm going to yield to-- Bob Colby's going to give you a little history lesson on the Powderhouse Blast, so I thank you all.
Jim, thank you very much. Thanks for your stewardship, too. Appreciate it. Ms. Colby, welcome.
When I earlier mentioned that, "Your mind is like a parachute. It's no good unless it's open," that's a quote from Frank Zappa.
Okay.
I forgot to mention that. Nobody actually knows when the Powderhouse Road name was derived, but I would think that it probably relates to the fact that the hardware stores had to supply dynamite and other blasting materials, but they didn't want to keep it downtown, and so they kept it out in the country. And at that point in time, it was out in the country. One of the things that people aren't aware of is that this Powderhouse Road Blast that we've been talking about was the second one. The first one happened when two young gentlemen were out hunting rabbits, and if you know a little bit about dynamite, it weeps or sweats, whichever, and it's made primarily of nitroglycerin and sawdust. And they had stored this in the little shed for a long period of time, and there was a constant dripping, weeping, whatever you wish, so that the boards in the structure on the floor, they had absorbed a certain amount of the nitroglycerin. Two young gentlemen from Sioux Falls went out and they were hunting. They saw a rabbit go under the building. They took their .22 rifle. They took a shot at the rabbit underneath. It wasn't the shot from the .22. It was the impact of the bullet into the flooring that set the house or the building off and blasted and eliminated the two young gentlemen, probably about the same age as the scouts that we have here in the audience. Those days were different. This was sometime in the early teens. And lo and behold, the mothers were asked to go on out in the field to look for the parts of their sons at that point in time. The second Powderhouse Blast was the one that dealt with the breaking of the windows here downtown. Now, I understood, and I could be wrong, but that the initial request was to change the name of Russell to Veterans Memorial, either Parkway or Roadway. And I heard that it was kiboshed by the support staff because so many businesses would have to change their name. And if you look at the map, there isn't, to my knowledge, one business that has direct turn access to the business from Russell into their business. Everybody turns onto a frontage road in order to get to their business, even going all the way from Minnesota Avenue over to Maine. I think all of those, I think Councilman Anderson's father had a business on the corner of Minnesota and Russell, and I think even that business was on Minnesota Avenue as opposed to Russell. And if you look at all of the businesses going west until Russell changes to Maple, there's no business that has direct access off Russell. It would make more sense for that to be the Veterans Memorial Parkway because you have the Veterans Memorial Park just a block south of it, and directions to that park is a commemoration for the service of the veterans that we've had in our community. That would make more sense than to have this out on the east edge of town. Maybe it deserves another name, a different name at some other point in time, but to separate the Veterans Memorial Parkway from the Veterans Memorial Park and have no relative continuity or closeness does not seem to make any sense, at least to my perspective. Anyhow, that's part of the request that we would make, is that maybe there's something that could be worked out yet. But I can't see where there were fifty-- someone said there were fifty businesses that would be on Russell Avenue or Russell Street that would have to change their name. No, you just change the frontage road name to Russell. You had to have South Russell or West Russell, whichever you wish to call it, North Russell or East Russell, whatever you wish to call it, but there is no direct business that turns off of Russell into their business establishment. So with that in mind, I'll let our next presenter come and speak with you. Thank you.
Ms. Colby, thank you so much. Folks, anybody else want to engage? Welcome, sir.
You can buy this book for forty bucks.
My name is Ben Mastick, and I live on sixteen oh eight South Powderhouse Road. We bought our house about twenty years ago on Powderhouse Road, and we didn't know too much about it. But we were talking to my-- some of my relatives in Edgerton, Minnesota, and my uncle says, "Yeah, I remember. I remember when that happened on New Year's Eve, and I was outside, and I heard this big explosion." And I said, "That's dynamite, and that was-- that's forty miles away." Also, my wife's relatives live in Ellsworth, Minnesota, and we have the same reaction and the same response from them. So there was some history here, and that's what we were looking at when we bought this house. Yes, there is history, so let's go look into it a little bit more. And so we looked into it, and we found some old news clippings, newspaper. Oh, this was in, I think it was two thousand nine, and there's another one of two thousand eleven, and even today's paper gave the history of it. Now, there's some significance and some importance in the history of things that happen around here. Some are small and some are large, and I don't know where you want to put this, but I think it's a-- it could be a large thing. Now, we had a plaque out there, and it was torn down when they were doing the reconstruction, and that's understandable, but they haven't put it up yet. But in the meantime, we had, I think I had about four or five people last year just come by while I was working on the lawn there, and they say, "Where is that Powderhouse Road? Where is that-- where did that happen? Where that Larson Hardware was?" And the only thing I could say, "Oh, maybe about two streetlights down north there. There you can find it there. It's a little ravine." Well, that isn't the way to talk to your tourists that come by and want to know about your town and about the history. So this is what I'm looking towards. Every town has some things, you know, they want to have-- they want to have their claim of fame, some are. And you can think of like a garrison, South Dakota, they have Jesse James deal. Well, I'll tell you a little story. My nephew came down from Indianapolis, Indiana, and he said, "What about Jesse James? What about that cavern, that chasm that he had his house, his horse jump over? I want to see that." And he's from Indiana. Okay, so I drove him up to Garrison. We went and looked at it, and it's a legend. I don't think-- I don't believe it myself, but okay, that's fine. But every town wants to have some kind of recognition, and I could think of many of them. Oh, like Little House on the Prairie, you know, in Lake Preston. Another one, Old Mowbridge, one time about ten years ago, I think it was, the sitting bull's remains was put in, was in some or in one of the-- I can't remember, one of the Indian reservations up there in North Dakota. Well, one night, they went up there and they stole his remains and buried them by Mowbridge, just for recognition. And they put up a plaque and said, "This is the remains of Sitting Bull." And so I don't know how well that went over, but see, the people want history, and they looked at this. Another one I can remember, about four years ago, we had a kind of a hundredth anniversary, I think it was, at Curry, Minnesota, where my mother's-- my wife's grandfather, my mother's grandfather was the tree master there at that one time. Anyhow, we went there, and then they had a little skit there, and they said, "See, this is how we did this in the olden days. They had a wagon, and they rode it around, and this is where it is." Curry, Minnesota was going to be the county seat, and they said, "Wait a minute now. We live in Slaton, and we don't like that idea." So they went up there in the middle of the night, stole all the records, and brought it back to Slaton and made that mid-Slaton the county seat, which it is today. So, I mean, there are a little history stuff. Maybe it doesn't mean a whole lot, but it's worth something, and I think that this is true, and especially Powderhouse Road. I think about every couple of years, we-- you get, you know, some kind of a thing in papers, just reminding us of it. It has a little intrigue. In fact, it has so much intrigue and suspense that Mr. Ron Robinson from Augustana wrote a book about it. This is now based on Powderhouse Road. It's the event surrounding the Powderhouse Road blow up by the man who lit the fuse. And it tells all about it, and it's embellished a little bit to make a story, but something like this could be a film. It could be a film about South Dakota because it has intrigue. It has a lot of stuff in it, you know, all the things that went on. If you want to read about it, read through it, and you'll find out. It's fun. So with that, I'll just close and say, you know, we don't want to diminish this. You don't want to-- you don't want to make it a Powderhouse, you know, just a little entrance, or you want to make it a frontage road. You can't call it Powderhouse Frontage. It doesn't make any sense. It should be Powderhouse Road, and it should stay that way. I think we should not diminish that. Powderhouse Road right now, as far as I could tell anyway, they got a sign there by Fifty-seventh Street that goes all the way up to Tenth Street. And it's all called Powderhouse Road. Now, you want to make it to Powderhouse Frontage Road? The frontage road is just in front of our house, and it goes up to Twenty-third Street. It goes to Twenty-sixth Street, which is about two blocks. Now, when people are going to look at Powderhouse Frontage Road, this doesn't make any sense to them. It won't make any sense at all, and it'll be lost in history. There'll be nothing left. So I would propose to just to make it a little, even bigger than that, or maybe make Powderhouse Road all the way to Schindler, or maybe even to Canton Road and all the way up to the interstate, which would make more sense. People are interested in this, and I can tell you that it would have history, and it will bring in some tourism. So I would with that, I'll just kind of leave it, but if anyone wants to know anything more about it, read this book about what Ron Robinson wrote. You know, it's embellished a bit, but it has a lot of history in it, and any of the things like this, like we pick up from the August leader and the plaques and by living in today's article here, if you haven't missed it, read it. It tells you a little bit about it. There's some history and there's a value there.
Mr. Mastick, thank you so much, sir. Folks, is anybody else who want to engage the council? Great. Welcome, sir. And sir, if you want to come up too, you sure can. Come on up.
Justin Oakland. I'm actually here on Completely Unrelated Matters. This is the first I've heard of this, but correct me if I'm wrong. We just voted to spend four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to preserve the history of a fire hall, and I guess apparently there's quite a bit of history here and be no difference, no different than, say, Sioux Falls. There's history there. I don't think we plan to change the name of the falls. We apparently plan to repair the firehouse, so just my thoughts.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it. Sir, welcome.
Ron Robinson, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Saw the book that I wrote some time ago about Powderhouse Blow Up. Great fondness for that particular incident for that reason, but for many others as well. Thirty-five years, I taught English literature and journalism at Augustana College, and, you know, I had respect for history at that time, but I had no real living passion for history until I found out that my great-grandfather fought on the Union side in the Civil War, Ohio one-twenty-third. He received a wound that turned out to be fatal at the Battle of Monocacy, just outside of Frederick, Maryland. I reckon that you probably never heard of Monocacy, the Great Battle of Monocacy, where my great-grandfather was mortally wounded. And the reason for that is that so many other battles in that war had great significance, Gettysburg, Antietam, and so on. But there are few who realize the importance of that battle because that battle was able to delay significantly and to stop the plans of General Jubal Early, who intended to march into Washington, Washington, D.C., take over the city, kidnap the President, President Abraham Lincoln, and to march on beyond the city on the other side where there was a prisoner of war enclosure, and to free those prisoners of war so they could fight on for the Confederacy. It was an important battle, and a few people know that and have been fighting, fighting to keep that name in front of people so that it won't be wiped out. I've visited the battlefield. It is endangered on all sides. About a mile away, a little over a mile, there's a mall, shopping mall, and people want to take that property. They want to develop it, of course. It's valuable, just outside of Frederick, Maryland, very living, vibrant city. But there are some people who stand up and say, "No, you can't take over that property. It's important." Now, the explosion of the Powderhouse is nothing like Monocacy, but we're trying to preserve the memory of that incident because it's important regionally. What is history about after all? It's about memory, about remembering important things, and we have to fight all the time to keep that memory alive. A few years back, I inherited the presidency of the Minnehaha Century Fund from Tom Killian. This organization tries to educate people about regional history, tries to preserve, tries to restore historic sites. We try to fund these historic markers. That book of historic markers that was held up a couple of times tonight, I helped put I helped publish. It's an important book, and the markers mark important events, but we've got to keep these names alive, and they must be kept alive any way we can find. We're hard at work. I just worked today at Pioneer Lane. A lot of people here in this room probably don't even know the name Pioneer Lane. It's out in the fairgrounds. Mr. Mayor, you were out there about a year ago, and we celebrated the building of some new construction out there. We have our trying, I try every day in every way that I can to publicize Pioneer Lane because it's a collection of important historic buildings and buildings that people should know about. Now, there's a balance here. We want to remember our veterans as well. We do, and we want to remember Powderhouse Blow Up. And I think we should keep the name Powderhouse Road for the original road, and I think that will help cement the memory of this important event. I also believe that some street should be honored with the name the Veterans Memorial Parkway, and I think that that has to be worked out. I don't have the solution. I think Bob Colby's solution is probably a pretty good one. But I urge you to try to keep these important historic names alive as much as you can. Thank you very much.
Mr. Robinson, thank you so much, too. Folks, I would remind you or encourage you, one of the things that the council really does want is they certainly do want your feedback, but at the same time, we try to keep the repetitive comments to a minimum. I think there's been great testimony. We had seven and a half minutes from Mr. Mastick, another over seven minutes from Mr. Robinson about the historical significance of Powderhouse and the event, maintaining, you know, this for posterity purposes, you know, remembering this important memory. It was an important event in our city's history. There were also some solutions that were given or alternatives given by Mr. Colby, which was reiterated by Mr. Robinson. So I think that those comments have been very well represented, and what I would encourage, if there are other speakers, if there's other important things that they'd want the council to consider, please bring those up, but it is just something that, as the moderator here, I'm just encouraged to relay to the folks. So welcome, sir.
Mayor, fellow city council members, my name is Ron Saaby. I'm a resident of Sioux Falls in the Whittier neighborhood. I am going to take a different approach on this. I have two issues here. Couple of weeks ago, you took the action here to name Mark Twain Lane for historical preservation. I would find it hypocritical if you vote in favor of changing Powderhouse Road because that is part of history. It's important. Your role here probably is more like ninety-nine percent of the time trying to make decisions on budgets and looking at the different future plans and how to develop Sioux Falls, to make Sioux Falls better in the future. I appreciate former city leaders who took the time today in their time to think about the future, but there's one, maybe five percent of your time is going to look at history and preserve history, and that's my concern here. Let's preserve-- Let's preserve history. You did it with Mark Twain School. Do it with Powder House Road. That is a very important thing to maintain. The second point that I want to bring to your attention is, in my opinion, there is a lack of input on the name change. And what I mean by that, would you change Phillips Avenue without contacting the whole city? I do understand letters went out to the people on Powder House Road. They're the ones that were notified. I found out about this at the first reading a couple of weeks ago. When I contacted those people that are in the historical community, surprise, surprise. The input from the citizens of Sioux Falls is important on this road, this name change. So I encourage you to vote against this. I want to preserve Powder House Road. Are we going to end up losing this for the future? By changing the name of Powder House Road, it's an address for an event. We're going to end up fading a piece of our history. Please give historic thought to this and make a decision on that. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Savi. Appreciate that. Folks, anybody else? Mr. Erschman?
I won't be repetitive either. I agree with all that they've said. I encourage you guys to vote against this. But what I want to address is, I think changing the name of Russell to the Veterans Memorial Parkway would be a wonderful thing. In all the years I've lived in Sioux Falls, I've had several friends that have visited here and they've always asked me, why is it called Russell? I said, I don't know. I don't know any significant historical person named Russell. And I read in the paper today that nobody has a clue why it's named Russell. Might have been the developer. I don't know. So instead of taking a road that's got historical significance and changing the name of it, why don't we take a road that doesn't really have historical significance? It runs along the Veterans Park. It'd be awesome. So that's just something to consider. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate that. Folks, anybody else? Well, very good, very good comments, very good testimony, council. And I'm going to leave it to you, Councilor Urbanbach.
Thank you. Can I ask a question of Mr. Colby, please?
Mr. Colby?
Mr. Colby, can you, on the map that's on the screen now, can you kind of give us an idea where the Powder House was?
It would have been in the Dolly Farm area, and I'd have to refer to the book, as you're well aware. The case wasn't solved until Mr. Dolly found the finger.
Right.
And that's what helped solve the case because of the fingerprint. So the Dollies were intimately involved with this. It was on their property, so it was across the Dolly Farm. There is a photo in this history book showing the hole in the ground that was there. And I'd have to take a look at it to give you an exact location.
Thank you, Mr. Colby. I think staff is circling a spot where it was in general, where we think the Powder House was, kind of by where the theater is now. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colby. If I might, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Chad.
Please, Chad.
I had a couple of questions for you. I know that the marker has been in place previously, recognizing the event, and that it's sitting in a garage somewhere at this time. Do you have any idea where that's going to end up? To replant it?
What I've been told is that they have been working with, I'll say, the Dolly Village. I think they've had discussions with Craig Lloyd on to, is there a location that it could be placed in that area? I've also heard there's been discussions of putting it on the east side near that frontage road.
Then, on the map that's on the screen, Chad, can you help us understand which part of the road we're talking about naming Veterans Parkway and which part of the road would remain Powder House Road after this vote? Or if the vote goes positive, I guess.
Okay, I'm going to first jump out to this large screen. And so at the bottom is 57th Street. Tonight's ordinance talks about from 57th Street North to Madison. Today, the name of Highway 11 is Highway 11 from, well, I should say Highway 11 slash Powder House Road, from 57th Street up to Arrowhead Parkway. Then Highway 11 goes to the east, and then it goes north through Brandon. The piece from Arrowhead Parkway up to Madison Street is what we would say is the road that is designated as Powder House, just as a single name. If I move forward then, the majority of the properties on the east side of the road here between Arrowhead and 26th Street are in Split Rock Heights. And the majority of those addresses are off of Powder House Road. It's not, I don't believe it's called Powder House Frontage Road. I think it's called Powder House Road. I mean, their addresses are whatever, whatever, Powder House Road. So after this, if this was approved, that Powder House Road would still be there on the east side of, I'll say, the highway between 26th and Arrowhead.
So what you're telling me is that what we call Highway 11 in this area is what we're changing to Veterans Parkway. What we call Powder House Road in this area is not changing. Correct?
In this area.
In this area.
This area from Arrowhead down to 26th, which we call Highway 11, would be changed to Veterans Parkway. The piece going north from Arrowhead up to Madison would be changed from Powder House Road to Veterans Parkway.
But then the area of the street that's nearest to the actual event would not change its name? It's kind of the impression I'm getting.
No, that's, that's, that would, that would change.
No.
No, the part, there is a part of Powder House Road there, nearest where the historic event happened, between.
26th and.
26th and 23rd-ish. That front, what we're calling a frontage road is actually Powder House Road.
On the east side.
On the east side.
Yes. That is called.
That address will not change. If I live on that street that's called Powder House Road today, my address will not change.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Counselors, Councilor Rolfing?
Yeah, just a, just a couple of, couple of things here I need to visit with everybody about. This was brought up by Mr. Kent Scribner to me a year and a half ago. And Kent felt that there was something that needed to be done to honor our veterans. I agreed with him. And we first considered Russell as Mr. Colby had indicated. But we did have just literally too many, 80, 90 businesses on that stretch of Russell that would, that would need to be contacted, would need to be informed, that would need to vote in favor of this. And instead, we started looking around and a suggestion was made to look at the new Highway 100 that is going to encircle the city of Sioux Falls, all the way from Interstate 90 out by the Aeros exit, all the way down around to the T exit, then back up again to the west to the T Ellis Road and north on the Ellis Road, all the way to Interstate 90. So there will be a continuous loop. Eventually someday, if we can ever get the House South Dakota Highway Department to come through, that would, that'll encircle the city of Sioux Falls. We looked at that and agreed that because of the number few along the road here that would, would be, that would have some, some change to there, there were not many. The only change that would, the only change that would have happened, well, really, there's only one address on this whole area that would change. And that's a church to the south of there that is on 33rd Street. And they are, would have to change their address anyway because their access is coming off of 33rd now that South Dakota 100 has been built out. So we looked at that and said, this is a good option. This is a very, very good option to honor the veterans, honor our veterans, and, and keep that going. Now, the problem I have with Russell at this point also is that if we, if we name the service roads at Russell on what is now Russell and the inside part of it, Veterans Memorial Parkway, coming off the interstate, what name do we use? Veterans Memorial Parkway or Russell? Because the businesses are not going to want to change that name. It's going to be Russell so that they know, they know where they're going. I can answer a question, too, about where Russell came from. That was part of the families, family names, I believe it was, of the, for the landowners that gave all that land to the north for the Air Force Base at the beginning or end or middle of World War II. And so when they built the Air Force Base up there, those names remain, Russell and Blaine, I believe, or some of those east-west streets in there were all family members. Many of the people out on Highway 11 already call it Highway 11 or South Dakota 100 rather than Powder House Road. I think most people know Powder House Road as the road just to the east of Highway 11. And that's the way it would remain. I want to emphasize that that would not change. Nobody's address is going to change except for that one, one place. I think this is a better way to show homage to our veterans with the road that's going to completely encircle Sioux Falls. Signage would be both on Interstate 90 in two places and on Interstate 29. This name will have the, will take care of the entire Highway 100 project as it is extended all the way around. I don't know, and nothing against Powder House Road, but I don't know that we want to extend Powder House Road all the way around to the southwest and come back up and call that Powder House Road all the way around, around to do that. So I would, I would be happy to answer any questions if somebody has one. And I would be, I would urge you to vote in favor of this, of this motion. I believe Mike Cooper has a little something he'd like to say, too, if I could, if we could ask him to do that.
Counselor, would you mind, just before we go to Mike?
Yes.
Would anybody want to make a motion to adopt this? And then let, then let's.
Second.
Thank you. It's been a motion to adopt it. It has been seconded. Now some discussion.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
Okay. I would like to move that we amend the item by removing number 51, quotes, Track One, Manifold Estates Edition, Ex, I don't know, EX Lot H1, 25-101-49 Sioux Falls Township, as this is a duplicate of number 46.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Counselor Karski. Is there any discussion on that? Very good. Roll a vote, please, on the amendment.
Okay, on the amendment. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Urbanbach? Yes. Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Rolfing, did you want somebody to speak?
Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, would you come forward? Do you know what Mr. Rolfing wants you to say?
Just real quick.
Okay, thank you.
As we have talked about South Dakota 100, it's important to remember that even if we weren't considering the name change tonight, that at some future date, we would have to look at that mile of Powder House Road from Arrowhead Parkway to Madison to make it consistent with the rest of, of South Dakota 100, which is now Highway 11. That's one point. The second point is where that red circle, which is the, the movie theater, we have been working with the Dolly Farm Development to construct a linear parkway right along the middle of that development that will have a trail access. What a wonderful spot that could be for some historical markers that would be accessible by people driving cars or people walking through that neighborhood. And I think we could work with the Historical Society to really come up with some good ideas to, to remember the name and, and put it in a really good place.
Explain. Counselor Jamison?
Thank you. Diane, could you help us by drawing a line on the map where that frontage road is that Chad was talking about?
Don't do it there.
Maybe the public as well to just illustrate just more clearly exactly where that road is.
If, if we go to 26th Street on the east side, right by the number eight, let's go just right where your cursor is, just a little to the right. It's, it's right there. It's, you could, it's hard to see, but there is a road there that continues north. I mean, even the properties all the way near Arrowhead Parkway, that's how they get to their, their homes.
Not over there.
Right there. Like even those parcels up there, that's how they access.
Stops right there at that last development.
Yeah, so you can, you can see the, the three lanes on the west side. You can see, you can see the grass median. You can see the three lanes on the east side. And then there is a, it's harder to see, but there is a road, a frontage road. And it's not, it's, it's Powder House Road.
Oh, yeah.
That's there. It's just, it's harder to see at the scale.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Staggers?
Yes. This is an interesting issue for me because I'm both a veteran and I also teach history. And beginning to look at this from a veteran's perspective, I guess I'm not very thrilled about having Highway 100, part of it being called Veterans Parkway, because I don't see the significance for veterans there. However, I do see the significance, of course, with Russell. But also at the same time, we might consider the Minnesota Avenue in front of the airport and extending for some time, changing that to Veterans Parkway or something like that. And that would also be a good message because when we have people getting off airplanes at the airport and they get on the Veterans Parkway, hey, that says a lot about Sioux Falls, what we think about veterans. And of course, obviously, Veterans Parkway would be associated with the airport. It's a perfect situation. And then when we talk about the Powder House, wow, we had some excellent testimony tonight. I want to thank everybody who, who gave their testimony. I think it's good that we stress that that's where a rather significant event in Sioux Falls history took place and to recognize that. So I think it would be a win-win situation if we would defeat this and pick a better location for the Veterans Parkway, maybe in front of the airport or Russell, and then also keep Powder House Road.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. I, too, want to thank the people that came to get involved, engaged, and, you know, educate all of us on a little bit of history that we maybe didn't know of. I struggled with this a little bit, thinking what was the right decision. And for me, knowing that that Powder House Road is still there, the addresses will not change, and to actually giving the location, an actual physical place that you can come, you can walk, you can share with your grandkids or my kids or whomever, to have that location there and have it really have more of a exact place to come and give the history to, I think that's a great location if we can work with those property developers to put a bench, put the marker there and really talk about what happened in that area. The history's not lost. The, the history will not be lost if this name change does go through. That road is still there. It still will remain Powder House Road. And, and obviously with everyone as passionate as they are about the history of this, it will not be lost. Depending on where the vote goes, I guess that's just what I want to share is that history will not be lost.
Counsel, very good testimony, very good comments. If there is no further discussion, we will vote on the amended motion.
Councilmembers Urbanbach? Yes. Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?